Good evening, everyone. I'd like to bring the June 20th, 2018 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please? Ms. Caldwell?
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Ferrichio? Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Bernhour?
Here.
Mr. Harris? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chavone?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Mr. Evans, could we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, especially the Interboro School District, and grant to this board in their deliberations this evening, spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace. What we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America. This is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mrs. Phyllis Floyd?
Phyllis Floyd, 604 Fourteenth Avenue, Prospect Park, 11.21. There's three science teachers that are leaving, which is sad to hear. I was wondering if anybody knows how many years they were employed by Interboro that
If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Floyd, none of them were more than 10 years.
None were more than...
Add that in front of you.
Okay, because I thought the one was definitely more than 10. Then we go to motion 12.1 and 12.2. I noticed these individuals have been with the district for five years, which, if I'm correct, that qualifies them for retirement benefits.
Whatever the state has in place, Mrs. Floyd, as far as retirement, whatever they're entitled to based on the state.
Right, and I believe it's five years. If you work with the school district for five years, that entitles you to retirement benefits. Okay, it's just something that I'm noticing is like becoming somewhat of a habit. Get a job at any school district, not just here. Work five years and you collect a retirement. I mean, I find that interesting. And I mentioned the other night about the administrative assistant for people education being transferred or promoted into a payroll specialist job. And in conversation, it came out that the present payroll specialist is not retiring, and no one seemed to know how much longer she's going to be working because apparently she needs to transition this individual or train this individual. So we have a person that's going to be in training for $44,000, an increase of, I want to say approximately $10,000 or more in income, plus 50-some thousand plus that is for the present clerk. So we're going to be paying almost close or around $100,000 for the payroll person. I mean, does this individual have any kind of accounting or payroll experience or anything that I understand transition, but the impression I got the other night from what responses I was getting, it's going to be, it's going to be for a while. And that's a lot of money for a person that's in training. So I didn't know if this job was advertised to see if we had someone that would be, have experience and wouldn't need as long of a transition or training period. I just, I don't understand it, and the answers I got, the responses I got from Mr. Phelps was not really conclusive of any of this. And it's something that I really think that, that much money, and we're strapped, the budget's going up, 9, 2.95%, and I just don't understand. It's like whenever I hear, "Oh, we're going to be saving money," I kind of shudder because it's rare that we save. It's rare that we save because whatever we save is almost immediately spent, just like the fund balance, the budget, and the surplus that we're going to have, which shows here, $81,000, is that correct? Okay, there's already plans to spend it. When? I don't know. Will it be this year? Possibly, if certain individuals have their way. And we were told by the auditors, our fund balance is very, very important, and the audit report stated and warned that we needed to get our fund balance up because it affects our credit, our credit rating. It might not yet, but it will. Not to mention, if we have an emergency, where are we going to get the money? So looking at that 81,000, that looks wonderful, but it's going to be spent. It's already earmarked, maybe not officially, it wasn't voted on, but it's going to be used up. And I'm just really concerned about, you know, 2.95, okay, instead of three, and we could go to 3.2, and the difference is minimal from each bracket, but the savings or the surplus is a lot more that would help our fund balance. And I understand that we're, I'll call it the shell game, we're taking, or shuffle, we're taking committed fund balance money and moving it up into the operational part of the budget. And it may be legal, but who are we fooling? The money's still going to be coming, you know, whether it's out of this pocket or this pocket, the money is still going to be spent. And going back to our auditors, are we trying to fool them? Do you think they're stupid as far as the money's up in the operating budget and makes the fund balance look larger, but still not large enough? So those points of the budget, I really wish the board as a whole, the finance director, the president, I, not finance director, the finance chair, I just wish that these points were taken more seriously into consideration because I, we're going to be in trouble, if not this year, next year. We're going to be in trouble. And what I said about savings, yeah, one year we laid off about a million dollars' worth of employees, and by September, which...
Mrs. Floyd, I don't want to rush you, but you're well over five minutes. If you could wrap it up, I would...
Thank you. The million dollars that was saved for budgetary purposes for the state report, okay, come September, just about everybody was brought back, and we were back in the hole again. So that's why I say I shudder when the comment, "There will be a savings," it gets spent almost immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts, Ms... Any other public comment, Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Zerdy Doby?
Zerdy Doby, Tinnicum. I'd just like to recognize District Judge Lippert. Number three, when Mrs. Ferrichio was sworn in and Mr. Goldsboro, what is going on with this process? Is there more than one person who is going to be nominated? Because this doesn't seem like the normal course of a, of procedures for a school board representative seeking a seat. What, why is this, is there, well, I guess the question is, is there more than one person going to be nominated?
We don't know that.
Pardon?
I said, "We do not know that, sir, at this time, but there are three candidates."
Okay, so it really doesn't make very much sense because in the past, if you've had multiple candidates, you've discussed it, I guess in an executive session, which is appropriate, and then you've decided on which one that would become a school board director. So I'm just a little bit questioning why this is in such, done in this manner, and you don't have an explanation. So number 10, which is the budget. You are proposing to increase the millage by 2.95%, and I'm protesting that increase. There is no need for that increase of that amount. It should be, if you're going to have any increase, it's only 0.95%. And once again, the issue is, for me, with the airport agreement that, in which you are giving away $800,000 every single year, since September the first of 2015, you have lost more than $2 million in revenue by not going forward to adjust that tax guarantee payment. I'm going to give you, this past Friday, June the 15th, there was a sheriff's sale held in the Delaware County Council Room. There are approximately 90 properties listed here. 10 of them are within the Interboro School District. 10. And there are 14, approximately, I think there are 14 school districts in the, in Delaware County. 10 are in the Interboro School District were listed for sheriff's sale. So I don't know, you know, each of these are different circumstances for the people losing, that may lose their property. So you're continuing to raise our taxes and not making any effort to recover that money. Last month, my representative, Ms. Bernhour, said that she had read the document and stated that the council, the solicitor, had advised them, or her, that it would not, not to go forward, that there was nothing you could do about it. Mr. Evans also stated that the solicitor, and that it would not be appropriate to go forward at the time. You also stated that it would, that there are, would be associated solicitor costs. You have, nothing could be further from the truth with regards to that. The document was reviewed by, and signed off on by a county judge. So that route of suing them, if that's what you were indicating, is not what is called for. The only thing that you can do, because you wouldn't win the court case anyway. So your lack of either understanding of that and not being honest and truthful about the characterization of what you are being asked to do with that agreement. So, once again, I went to the Delaware County Council meeting this morning, and I brought this issue up with them, and I asked them to revisit their distribution of that fixed payment, to readjust it according to the millage rate. And Representative Council Members Zidek and Madden are going to review the document, and hopefully they will come to a logical conclusion to help the Interboro School District and its children with their education fund. This past Monday, Tinnicum Township held their meeting, and again, I brought that issue up, and I asked my representative commissioner, Dennis Arthur, to introduce a motion to readjust payment of that, and they just sat there. There was no response from them, which can only be described as an attitude of greed and not willing to adjust that, and your response to not going forward is something else. And so I object to you raising our taxes and allowing money to go forward and losing it at the rate of $2,000 a day, $800,000 every single year for the next 20 years, starting in, in 2015. And... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doby. Appreciate your thoughts. Are there any other public comments, Mr. Evans?
Good evening, Chris Kelly, Tinnicum. A couple things. First off, I wanted to agree with Mr. Doby on the airport agreement. There was no reason to give any of that money to the county. Should have stayed within the district. Understand why the board, no reason for the county to get more money. It bothers my mind that the district didn't fight. Other question, I had another question on 17.4. Motion is the engagement letter for Major and Mastro. How much are we paying, paying them now, per year? $1,500? Okay, okay, thank you. And that hasn't actually increased in a while, has it? I think it was somewhere in the 20s for a long time. Okay, thank you. And finally, I just have something about motion number three. Again, as Mr. Doby stated, there were three candidates there able to attend the meeting and listen to the interview process and what the applicants had to say. I thought when I, when I came up and I saw the agenda today, I was going to see three names, and that each board member would be able to then state whoever they were going to vote for. That's, that's the way it should happen, so that it's open and it's transparent. I've obviously been on the board before, and I've seen some of the shenanigans that happen in Delaware County with not only this board, but with other entities within Delaware County. And that's one of the biggest things, is it's not transparent, and you never know what's going on behind the scenes. So if all three people's, three people's names had been on here, it would have been a much more transparent, I guess, situation for you guys to handle, and it wouldn't have, I guess, the appearance of something happening behind closed doors. So that's, that's, that's the first thing I saw when I saw on the agenda, and I wasn't real happy about that. But then the other thing was, I guess when I heard candidates the other night, I was able to kind of make a quick choice about who I thought was the best person, just by listening to what they had to say, not even knowing the people that well. And, and I guess that was one of the things, when I, when I sat there and listened to it, and I heard the backgrounds, and I heard, you know, what they were bringing to the table, this is an important thing. And I don't know if people understand that in the public, I hope they do, but this is an important position. You're dealing with our kids' futures, and you're dealing with something else, which is budgets and taxpayer money. So it's super important you get the right person in here. And I think the choice is pretty simple. I hope that the Tinnicum reps vote for the right person for the right reason. I brought it up in that interview, in an interview session, where I said, you know, I, I would hope that one of the questions that comes from the board is basically a question about political affiliations and what you do in the community. So if you are like a committee person, or a ward leader, or whatever, that does kind of color your, I guess, outlook, and it could actually change the way some people think about you and vote yes or no on you. So I think that's something that, in the future, you guys should really put in place, so it is more transparent, so everyone knows who's coming to the table and why they're coming to the table. And in light of that, just, just from the people that I heard and what I saw the other night, I think that Donna Franz is the best candidate for this position. When I was on the board, she was at multiple meetings. She was at work sessions, she was at committee meetings, finance committee meetings, all sorts of meetings, because she was involved in the schools. She had a vested interest. And I didn't think I saw that with the other two, which is a shame. And I didn't think I saw the same kind of, I guess, joy for the district that she has. She's willing to volunteer, she's done it for years, and I think that's one of the most important things, that you're, you're here for the right reason. You don't care about anything else, you're here for the kids. When I jumped, when I ran for office and actually got on the board, that's the reason why I did it. I got nothing out of it. And like you said, Mr. Phelps, the other night, you know, it's an unpaid, it's an unpaid position, and it's not, lots of times, it's an unpleasant position because you're dealing with stuff that people don't want to deal with, like taxes. So you really want somebody that loves this district and loves the kids in it. And I think with the, I guess, the background that she has, the fact that she's been involved, she understands the district and some of the issues in the district, and she's had many, many years of meetings, that she would be the best fit for this, but... And then I guess the other big thing that I saw the other night, I wasn't able to attend the, the work session, but I heard that two of the candidates left, and she's the only one that stayed. That kind of annoyed me because everybody knows that deals with, with school districts and budgets, is that June is the most important month of the year. It's the most important meeting of the year, too. So I just think it's an easy choice for everybody, and I hope that Donna does get the position. And I really think that, you know, you should scrap motion three and actually put it up to a roll call vote with all three candidates able to be voted on, and that's it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Your thoughts? Mr. Evans, is there any other public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to number three, nominations to appoint as Board of Director for Glen Oldenborough, Region Three, Precinct Four, for the remainder of the term through November 2019.
I would like to nominate Christine Alonzo Lorenzo.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Donna Franz.
Any other nominees? Like to make a motion to close nominations? We will vote for the Board Director position. We will vote on Christine Alonzo first. This would be a roll call. Ms. Caldwell?
Mr. Goldsboro?
No.
Ms. Ferrichio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Bernhour?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
We have, Christine is tied to three. The Board Representative for Interboro School District will be Christine Alonzo. Alonzo Lorenzo, I'm sorry. Christine, if you could come down to the front with our Judge Lippert. Yes, your family can come also. Ms. Alonzo, let me be the first to congratulate you and welcome you to the board. We do appreciate your stepping up and volunteering your time. Mr. Evans, moving on to number four.
Motion 4.1, that the following minutes of the special meeting of the Innabar Board of School Directors held on May 21st, 2018 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion.
Motion 4.2, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Innabar Board of School Directors held on May 16th, 2018 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. And number five, Ms. Goham, the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This month, our office has consulted with the school district on board policy and procedures, including those that are applicable to the election of new members, contract review, including, again, the airport matter, special education issues, student day-to-day consultation issues, including those involving discipline of students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goham. Moving on to number six, Mr. Evans.
Motion 6.1, that the treasurer's report for the month ending May 31st, 2018 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 6.2, that fund disbursements in the amount of $3,992,754.43 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Number seven, is there any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
Yeah, we still have motion 6.3.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, sir. That the budget transfers for the fiscal year 2017-2018 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Now, correspondence, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. To the Board of School Directors dated June 20th, 2018, from the Innabar School, at the Innabar School District, 500 Washington Avenue Prospect Park, 19076. Hello. On behalf of the IHS Home and School Association, I would like to congratulate the winners of this year's art contest and essay scholarship contest. There were 15 categories in the art contest with a total of 45 winners, too many to list here. Each and every one of the hundreds of pieces of art were amazing and an example of the great talent right here at the high school. The winner of the Best in Show category was Emily Long. One of her best pieces will be framed and permanently displayed at the high school. Emily plans to attend Villanova University in the fall to pursue her passion for art. I commend art teachers Pat Hay and Chris Slate for their ability to direct and bring out the best of Innabar's high school art students. The winners of the essay contest were Taylor Burkhimer, Jordan Schreiber, Maria, Marta Waluska, Paul Ebert, Tyler, I'm sorry, Ty Lee Alston, and Sam Collington. I would like to share just a couple of remarkable selections that highlight these students' perspective of the teachers. On the topic of your future plans and how Innabar has prepared you, Taylor Burkhimer wrote, "In retrospect, I vividly recall one teacher in particular, my first grade teacher, Ms. Kovac, who always encouraged the class to give our all to everything that we did and to never give up, no matter how difficult the challenge. She taught us the meaning of grit and determination as she continually reminded the class that nothing is impossible if you try. These simple lessons learned when I was six years old were so impactful to me, here I sat, nearly 12 years later, remembering her words and putting her advice into action." On the topic of advice to incoming freshmen, Marta Waluska offered, "Know the guidance counselors are not always in their offices, but they shouldn't be. They are not getting paid to sit on a chair and waiting for you to come down with your problems. They have a million responsibilities that are much larger than you wanting to change classes so you can sit with your best friend. Don't complain that you never see them, because if you truly need an issue resolved, they will make time to see you and try their best to help you. They spread themselves thin to help manage many important aspects of this school, and that should be appreciated. Take the time to make an appointment to see your guidance counselor and make sure you thank them for all they do for you and your school." Finally, Marta shared, "Teachers all have a common goal to help you succeed. I understand feeling like a teacher is out, feeling like a teacher is out to get you or simply does not like you, but also understand that it's not true. Entering my junior year, I wanted nothing more than to drop AP language simply for the fact that I had gotten a couple of bad grades on essays that I thought I had excelled in. I was sure that Ms. Salerno, who is, who yes, indeed is amazing, was out to get me, did not want me to do well in her course. Yet, as the year progressed and my work improved, I suddenly began to understand why she was so hard on me in the beginning. After passing the AP test with flying colors and gaining college credit, I went back to hug her and tell her how much I appreciated her. Teachers only push you so hard and expect so much out of you because they know you have potential. They're trying to get you to push yourself to your limits and comprehend that there are no limits to your knowledge. Listen to your teachers, be nice to them, do what they say, you will thank them one day. When Mrs. Salerno learned of Marta's praise, she said, 'Thank you for taking the time to share a copy of Marta's essay with me. I appreciate it more than you know, it is a perfect way to end a school year, and it will give me courage for the next year. I hope that all of the Innabar district teachers, staff, and administrators know that they're appreciated and that they feel encouraged to continue to do their best. Your reward will be students like Taylor and Marta reaping the benefit of your good teaching deeds. Sincerely, Margie Evans, Innabar High School Home and School.'"
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Very nice, better to the board there. Moving on to number eight, committee reports. First up, 8.1, finance meeting, Mr. Chavone.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, June 4th, 2018. We also discussed budget issues at the work session meeting held on Monday, June 18th. The first item discussed was the 1819 preliminary budget, the final budget, I apologize. Mr. High School reviewed the final budget and highlighted the differences compared to the budget from the May meeting. I'm going to highlight some of the information from both the finance and the work session meeting. This month, our budget saw a decrease in its revenue by $145,250. This decrease in revenue is due to adjustments for the State Farm grant, assessment changes, and the adjustment to the proposed tax increase. We previously were using the figure 3.2% and adjusted it to the 2.95%, which is on the agenda for approval. We did find some savings and saw our expenditures decrease by $95,498. Most of the savings came from the salary and benefits line item due to retirements and resignations, some of which are on the agenda for approval this evening. Although we need to fill these positions, they provide a net savings to the district of approximately $90,000. We saw an increase to the bus lease line item by $27,000 because we need to have additional vans for students with IEPs. We also saw a decrease of $281,685 because we reallocated the committed debt service money back into the operating budget. The purpose of this is to stabilize and potentially increase the fund balance. This strategy is aggressive because it will reduce the budget surplus for this year, but however, it can benefit the fund balance in the following fiscal year. All board members believed that this is the most fiscally responsible decision. Overall, our budget surplus was reduced from $365,361 to approximately $81,000 with a 2.95% tax increase. The committee and other board members had discussions on where they felt most comfortable with the tax increase. Some board members wanted to go to the index of 3.2% in order to increase the surplus and help the fund balance, while some board members wanted to go as low as 2.8% and break about even with any surplus. A compromise of 2.95% was discussed and placed on the agenda this evening. The proposed 2.95% tax increase will increase the millage rate by 1.0631 mills, and that will generate $1,474,022 for the school district. Much of this money and other savings we found over the last six months is being used to cover increases to the salary and benefits line item, the special education line item, and the debt service line item. To see a side-by-side analysis of last year's budget with this year's budget, please review the handout that was placed at the back of the auditorium, and will also be placed on the website. To put the proposed tax increase into real figures for the community, if a house is assessed at $88,000, a 2.95% tax increase would increase your annual tax bill by $94, or about $8 a month. If your house is assessed at $200,000, a 2.95% tax increase would increase your annual tax bill by $213, or about $18 a month. And then if it's somewhere in between, it could go lower or higher. The board is aware of the impact that any tax increase has on its residents. Many seniors are on fixed income, and a tax increase will, you know, make them have to look deeply at their budgets. We are a community of hard-working people who work day in and day out to provide for our families and do not have much more disposable income. No one likes to raise taxes. Unfortunately, there are many competing factors that we have to deal with, such as maintenance of our facilities, retention of highly qualified personnel, fiscal stability for the district, and the quality of education for our students. I would like to thank Mr. Harris, Ms. Joseph, and other members of the board for working on this budget over the last couple of months, this is truly a team effort. Mr. High School and Ms. Riley in a few minutes are going to review how the budget will impact this year coming up, how it will impact the district this year. And as I mentioned, the proposed budget will be placed, or the final budget will, if passed tonight, will be placed on the website for the public. The second item on the agenda was the preliminary financial statements. All board members had an opportunity to review and ask any questions. The committee adjourned, and we will not be holding a Finance Committee meeting in July. Any finance issues that come up will be discussed at the work session meeting. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Moving on to 8.2, usually this is Mr. Evans, but I ran the meeting due to he had obligations with some of our students at sporting events. The GBO was held on Monday, June 4th, 2018, following the Finance Committee meeting. The Curriculum Department presented the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence in Equity. The consortium helps to identify gaps in our school system, how to increase parent and family involvement, and support the students more effectively. It provides for various professional development in such areas as leadership for administrators, teacher leaders, youth leadership, supporting, support developing school cultures, provides a simpanance, excuse me, on best practices among districts. It empowers leadership and students to succeed and is on the agenda this evening to be voted on. The Human Resources presented a Safe School Professional Development software platform. This gives the district a platform for various professional development and training tools. This software also provides the district the ability to track state requirements more efficiently. This would be provided through a consortium from the DCIU, and this is also open to our entire Innabar staff as well. The Facilities Department gave the board an update on the schedule and the process for the cleaning and maintenance of the buildings for the upcoming school year. Mr. Galloway also gave an update on energy savings while buildings were not being utilized, and provide the update on the keying project taking place around the district. The meeting adjourned at 8:37 PM, and as a finance, we will not be holding a GBO this month, we will be addressing any issues at the workshop. That's my report. And moving on to 8.3, legislative update, Mr. Evans, there is no...
No, sir, there is no report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. 8.4, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsboro.
There hasn't been a meeting since I've been put on the board, so at this time, there is no...
Thank you, sir. And moving on to 8.5, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
I get the extra time, I'll use up all their extra time, so we're going to go real long here. Okay, here we go. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on July 6th, 2018. The Intermediate Unit General Operation Budget for 2018-2019 has been approved by all 15 school districts. 15 school districts have approved the election of the following individuals to serve as members on the Delaware County Intermediate Board of Directors from a term of July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2021. Chi Chester Ed Cardo, Pendelco, Colleen Powell, Rose Tree Media, Jaclyn Clancy, Upper Darby, Monica Taylor, Wallingford Swafmore, Kelly Watchman. Approve a partnership agreement with Head Start for the following districts collaborating, share students' outcome data, and support kindergarten registrations. Innabar School District, yay, and Chester Upland School District. Approve DCI contracts with the following: Rose Tree Media School District, Springfield School District, Upper Darby School District, Chester School District, Chi Chester School District, Upper Darby School District. Approve to perform a 2018-2019 healthcare insurance premiums with the Delaware County Public Schools Health Insurance Trust at an estimated cost of, ready, Jack, because you're good with the numbers, $7,781,103. For more news and information, please go to DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to number nine, presentation of our proposed final fund budget. Ms. Bernadette Riley and Martin Haskell.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. At this time, I would ask the board members to please have a seat in the audience. Good evening, everyone. I would like to take this opportunity to start off our presentation by thanking the Board of School Directors for their assistance with the administration through this process, especially the Finance Committee, Ms. Joseph, Mr. Harris, and the Finance Chair, Mr. Chavone, our directors and administrators. We have been working on this budget, I would say we started this process in October behind the scenes. We have been working diligently as a team to provide a fiscally responsible budget that continues to provide a quality education to our students and also recognizes the burden that any tax increase places on our taxpayers. As Mr. Chavone stated, the budget handout that was given out this evening provides a much more in-depth look at our budget. It will be available on the school district website, and we will also have copies, a limited number of copies available at the administration building and in our buildings. It will be available on Monday, and I believe that date is June 2020. It will be available on Monday, and I believe that date is June 25th. First slide we're going to talk about this evening is how does our district generate revenue? If you've sat through our presentations before, we do like to flush some of this out with the public because we do think it's important to know where our revenue sources are. That large portion that you see there is our local sources, which are tax dollars. That's the tax, real estate taxes that we collect from our community. Out of that 64%, 90% of it is from the real estate. So, that is quite a large amount of money that does support the education programs here in our district. The state sources, which is about $22 million, that is our basic education funding that we receive from the state. It's special education subsidies and transportation. And of that very small portion up there that you see, basically, that 1% is our federal sources, which is our federal programs money that we receive, Title I, Title II, and Title IV. How our district is spending money, the largest portion of our budget does go to our salary and our benefits. That's approximately 75% to 80% of our budget. About $20 million goes towards benefits. That's healthcare, that's our PESR's costs, our unemployment, and retirement. We do receive subsidy back from the state on our PESR's costs, which is about 50% to 55%. Our instructional costs, which is about 8% of our budget, that is our special ed cost, funds that we pay out to the Delaware County Community College, and cyber school tuition, just to name a few. Our support services that you see up there, that's about $3 million, that's our administrative costs and busing. We have our debt service, which is the amount that the district has accrued for capital projects. So, the HVAC projects that we have completed over the past four to five years, that's the debt service. That is what we use to pay for those projects. And if you look up there, that very small number there is the schools. That's our operational amount for each of our schools that they use on a day-to-day basis. That pays for supplies, library books, things that they need within their building. So, it is a very, very small portion that we use to operate the schools. Also, we have there our Facilities Department. That's our water, our gas, our electric, sewers, repair work, our maintenance custodians, and our grounds. Just want to point out on this, this is our non-fixed and non-contractual expenditures. If you look at the bottom where you'll see that highlighted number, that $4.2 million, 6.21% of the budget, that is really the area that Mr. High School and I focus on when we are working on this budget, because all, the majority of those other costs that we have up there are pretty much fixed. Our salaries are fixed based on our contractual obligations, our benefit costs are fixed. So, when we really start to look at how to reduce, reduce the budget, we really look hard at that non-fixed, non-contractual expenditures. And you can see that is a very small portion of the entire budget, but that is really the place where we, where we do start to look. Where the district, let me go here for a minute. You know, when we, what drives our budget are, as I said earlier, those salary obligations, our contractual obligations, our healthcare benefits, retirement, our debt, and our special education costs. So, you know, where does the district have the ability to manage and control some of these costs? When we are negotiating contracts. When we are looking at healthcare, where can we get the best deal? Or where can we get, where can we save money on the benefits and things that we are offering? So, we always are shopping around for the best price that we can get, but it is, it is an ongoing process. And again, when we negotiate our contracts, since that makes up such a large portion of our budget, that is where we try and control some of our costs. One of the areas we really focused on this year was our fund balance. And as, I believe, Mr. Chivonne, you mentioned this, when we completed our audit this year, one of the focuses that the auditing firm wanted us to look at was that we need to start looking at that fund balance and moving, moving in the opposite direction. We have slowly been depleting that fund balance for a variety of reasons, and we recognize that if we continue to do that, we will deplete it completely. And we, as a district, cannot allow that to happen. We need to really start to look to how to increase and get that number back up to about 8% of our budget. And I'm going to ask Mr. High School to come up and talk a little bit about this and what the district is looking to do to try and address this issue.
Good evening, everyone. The slide you see here is status of our fund balance. The three years that are shown in the table to the right, those are the audited numbers. And as you can see, those, the fund balances have been decreasing each year. With that respect, Standard &amp; Poor's has now changed our district rating from an AA- minus to an A+. A+ is still good, but it's not obviously as good as an AA-. This could potentially affect future bond issuance if we need them for projects. And what they're doing, proposing tonight is 2.95% increase in taxes, which would generate about $81,000 in surplus. That would help to increase our fund balance if everything stays status quo during the year, from budget to actual. So, this needs to be addressed. We are needing to increase our fund balance. And with that being said, there's our, there is a proposal to help increase the fund balance other than just raising the taxes. Basically, we, when you commit a fund balance, that automatically comes out every year. So, what we want, proposing to do, based on the auditor's recommendation from the June 30th, 2017 audit, is that we would like to, the proposal what the district would like to do is to take two of the committed items that are going to be remaining for 18, 19, and 1920. And in 18, 19, we'd like to, the district would like to take that uncommitted fund balance for the 2015 A federal obligation bond and move that up into uncommitted. And in 2019, 2020, they would, we would like to take the leases for the vans and the buses and also move those up to uncommitted. By doing so, this allows the district not to use any unassigned fund balance if we, if we budget status quo every year for a budget neutral. It could potentially increase our bond rating if our fund balance does go up, and it will, will follow the recommendation of the auditors as well. There are some, a couple negatives to this approach. Mrs. Riley, the administration and the Board would have to reduce expenditures in other areas as they go through the budget process in future years. And depending on future budgets, the Board would, would potentially recommit funds as needed for capital improvements as they arise. And this is just an example here of, the top section is if we stay the way we are now with the committed fund balance. As you can see, we're, we're going, be going from an actual $5.3 million all the way down to $2.1 million over the next five years. And if we do the uncommitted proposal, you can see we're going to, we're going to have a slight decrease, but we, as you can see, in 2019, 2020, we started to go back up again. And that's the general idea of this proposal is to turn it around so that we are adding to the fund balance as opposed to taking away from it. And as you can see on the bottom of each of those, if we use our proposal, we'll be in five years up to that 6%, which is the 2% less than what the recommend, recommended 8% is from the Department of Ed. If not, we're going to be looking at about a 2% at that point.
Thank you. So, options that we consider when we're looking to balance the budget. Of course, the contracts to ensure that they are fiscally beneficial to both parties, reducing, restructuring, eliminating programs, services, and staff. And I am very pleased to announce that this year, we are not having to do any of that. For the past three years, we have had to look very, very, very much at our staffing programs, and we've had to restructure in a variety of subject areas. But this year, we do not have to do that, and that is an accomplishment for us. The last thing we want to do is reduce any types of programs or services for our students. So, you know, I'm very proud of the work that we have done in that area. Defer capital improvements. The district has spent close to $35 million on renovating our infrastructure HVAC. So, that is, that was our project at the time. The Board is consistently, constantly looking at how we can make improvements. But right now, you know, looking at big projects is something we just kind of have to hold the line on right now and focus on increasing that fund balance. And of course, as I stated, you know, increasing the tax.
This is mainly informational. With the 2.95% tax increase, you'll see about $1.5 million generated in real estate tax revenue from last year to this year. The, the right just kind of shows you the current year where the millage rates are for each district in the county. And on the left, it just kind of gives you a history of the tax increases over the last 10 years for the Inner Borough School District. The, the tax increase and how this would impact you, the assessment, average assessment value according to the county as of June of this year, it's about $88,000. So, if you're in the, the average assessment, your increase would be about $94. And as you can see, from $70,000, it would be 74, all the way up to $200,000, would be $213 increase per year.
Some of our proposed staffing for next year, we will be adding in a college career counselor to, to support students in grade, grade 6 through 12. This is being paid through Ready to Learn funds. We are proposing an autistic support teacher at Prospect Park School to continue to support the continuum of services that we are providing to students as they transition from the elementary into the middle school. We're adding in, hoping to approve a behavioral specialist that will work throughout the district for our students that have emotional and social needs. We are looking at adding two additional paraprofessionals to support tiered interventions within our, for math, and that's also being covered, paid for through Ready to Learn grants. And we are also requesting a .5 access coordinator, and that's to assist parents and families who are looking to obtain access services through Medicare. The district, through this process, will receive revenue back, which helps provide services to students who are, who have access. So, we're hoping to build upon that position in the future. Some of our other proposed highlights for 18, 19, we have a variety of professional development for next year. We are looking to approve the membership to the Delaware Valley Consortium for Excellence and Equity. We'll be paying for that through Title II funds. The Right Tools, which is for first through fifth grade regular and special education students, that's being paid for through Title I. We are continuing our differentiated instruction work with our ninth and 10th grade teachers, and we are bringing in Jimmy Casas to work with our staff on professional development, and his focus is on culture, school culture, and we're excited to have him coming to the school district. Safety and security, we are working with a consultant who is finishing up evaluations of all of our buildings, and we are in the process of doing the exterior rekeying. I did want to point out that I, if anyone saw the Daily Times today, there was an article on the PA budget plan, which includes more funding for schools in the area of school safety. So, hopefully, we will see that happen, and the district will be able to utilize those funds to continue to enhance the security and safety around the district. So, we'll be following that piece very closely. Also, we are working on completing our collaborative spaces in all of our community schools. That was funded through our Boeing grant and also through Ready to Learn. And we are getting to the point where we are completing our aquaponics classroom, which was also funded through a State Farm grant. So, I think up here, you will see that we do really utilize our federal programs money and our grant money to the best of our ability and ensure that we are really choosing good professional develop, professional development, and, you know, that we are getting the most that we can for, for those funds. As far as grants for next year, we have applied for the pre-K count grant through the state for, we are looking to add another classroom. So, we would have our classroom at the high school, which we just completed our first year very successfully, and we're looking to add another classroom at the Kindergarten Academy. That is a five-year grant. Each year is about $289,000, with a total at the end of five years about $1.45. We're very excited about that pre-K class. And one of the things that we will, we will be doing this year is really looking and monitoring the data of those children that attended our pre-K program and are now moving into our kindergarten program. So, that's really going to be a focus for us this year, and we will be sharing that out. Unfortunately, if we do not receive the funding for the pre-K count, we will still be able to maintain the program at the high school, and that will be paid for through Ready to Learn. And last, we did put in for another Boeing grant. This one is entitled collaborative, it's a Collaborative Learning Commons. This is for the high school, and it's designing spaces to create STEM career and college connections for $125,000, and that will focus on the library area here at the high school.
This is, actually, these numbers came out this, this morning from Harrisburg. They are deliberating this week, and they hope to finalize their budget and have it adopted by June 30th of 2018. These are some of the areas here that will affect the Inner Borough School District with the, with the budget. The basic ed funding, the governor is looking to increase that by $100 million. That would give a $6.1 million budget for basic education for the, for the whole state. Of, of that increase, we would see about $161,000, very small in the grand scheme of things. And our, our basic ed funding budget that would be in the budget tonight is priced only $9 million. The other area that he's proposing for an increase is special ed funding. It was $20 million, now it's $15 million. Of that $15 million, we, we would see an increase of about $100,000. The budget in the state is 1.1 million, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, 1.1 billion, and of that, about $2.3 million is ours. The proposed increase in the pre-K camps funding is at $20 million, and that's results in a, a funding of $192 million statewide. Of that, $192 million, the district here would see about $289,000 of that if, if we are approved for that grant. The proposed Ready to Learn budget is about $268 million, of which we see about $555,000. So, as you can see, we're a very small percentage. Every, every one of those that we have is about less than 1% of the totals, this total state budget. So, we do rely on state funding, but unfortunately, that's not going to get it done.
As taxpayers, you know, I always do put this slide in here because our, our legislators are, we are fortunate that we have legislators who do support public education. And there are times when there are critical bills that are going through the House and the Senate that do have a financial effect on the district. The Board does take those... The board does take those opportunities to inform the public, and at times, we do ask for the public to contact their local legislators. So if you look at our website, we do have that information up there. It's always good to try and keep up on what's going on up in Harrisburg. But to be honest, things do move slowly there at times. But we do monitor it very closely. It was mentioned tonight that we do have a legislative council that happens at the Delaware County Intermediate Unit once a month, and we do receive a lot of important information there. Plus, we do get a lot of emails that do come through on what is happening in Harrisburg. So we do try and monitor that very closely because it does have an impact on the decisions that we make. And that is our budget presentation for this year. Again, I would just like to thank everyone for their support of this process. It is an ongoing, it's just ongoing throughout the majority of the year, and we really do keep in mind the burden that this does place on taxpayers. And we could not do this. The administrative team would not be able to do this without the support of the board. So I really need to thank each and every one of you for your input that you give us. We really do listen to you, and it does have an impact on the decisions that we make. So thank you so much for all your support. We are available to answer any questions that anyone might have after the meeting. Of course, we will be here. All of these documents, the handout from this evening and the budget presentation will be available on our website as of Monday, and we will have some handouts placed in all of the buildings and at the administration building for anyone who might want to pick one up. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank Mr. Chivon and the rest of the finance committee. They worked tires tirelessly on this budget. As Mr. Kelly, as someone stated earlier, this month is a hard month, you know, every year trying to get this budget done and trying to make everything fit and work. It's not an easy task. The entire board works on it, but the finance committee really puts their time in, as well as Mr. High School and Ms. Riley, they worked tires, hours on this, and we do appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to number, number ten.
Motion that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached final general fund budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty eighteen, to June thirty, twenty nineteen, with proposed expenditures of sixty-seven million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars, requiring an increase of one point zero six three one mils over the current millage rate, resulting in a tax increase of two point nine five percent for a new total millage rate of thirty-seven dot one zero zero eight mils.
Second.
This motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
It might not be the appropriate place to comment on this, but first, I'd like to thank the superintendent and Mr. High School for all their creative efforts in getting us to this point. It's a good thing that if the state does pass their budget, that although it's only in minuscule amounts, all our amounts go up a little bit rather than going down, which is a good thing. I don't, I don't find, you know, in looking at the pie charts that the superintendent put up, I don't find anything but creative management of the existing available funds. And I appreciate all the effort that the entire administrative staff puts out in order to try and get all this stuff done for our students with the, with the amount of money we do have. So I just wanted to thank them for that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Alonso Lorenzo?
Abstained from the vote.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Ferricchio?
No.
Ms. Joseph?
Ms. Bernhour?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries six to two with one abstention. Moving on to number eleven, personnel, where, Mr. Evans?
Motion that the filing personnel actions be approved, starting with eleven point one on page two and going to eleven point twenty-two on page eight.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion with regret that the filing retirements be accepted. Number twelve point one, Christine Wallace, French teacher with five years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective June fourteenth, twenty eighteen, under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion twelve point two, Patricia Reeves, custodian of Norwood School with five years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective July sixth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Current Curriculum and Instruction, motion thirteen point one on page eight to motion thirteen point nineteen on page ten.
Second.
Motions, motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion fourteen from the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services. Motion that the filing items be approved, fourteen point one to fourteen point six.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion fifteen from the Office of Technology, motion fifteen point one and fifteen point two.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Facilities, motion that filing items be approved, sixteen point one to sixteen point four.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion seventeen point one to seventeen point five.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carry nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion eighteen that the Board of School Directors approve the contract with Scenario Learning to provide a software platform for employee professional development for various state-required trainings effective July one, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, at a total cost not to exceed thirty-two hundred dollars to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr.
Motion nineteen is a roll call. Motion, motion that the Board of School Directors approve a price, a price quote from Bedford Freeman and Worth for the purchase of high school environmental science AP test textbooks with a six-use license to the Launchpad platform at a cost not to exceed five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents to be paid from the Ready to Learn grant funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alonso Lorenzo?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Ferricchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Bernhour?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Is there any old business? Hearing none. Is there any new business? Hearing none. Can we have comments from our superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Summer is upon us. There is lots of good information for parents on our website regarding summer reading and math requirements. So I would ask parents, if they have any questions about that, to please check out our website, or you can call the building administrators, and they can also provide you with some information. We also have packets available in the vestibule of the administration building. Soon as you come in, there's a table on the right, and there are folders that have packets for students from grades first through twelve. So if you need any assistance with that, again, you can stop by the administration building or call your building administrator. Summer registration, reregistration is also taking place. There's information on our website about that. We're also doing residency verification. It's very busy. I would strongly recommend to parents that if you are able to come in here during the months of June and July, I would recommend that you do that. It gets very crowded in August, and to ensure that your child is able to start on the first day of school, if you are able to get in here, please do so. We do have evening hours available as well. Finally, on behalf of the administration, I would like to wish everyone a safe, relaxing summer, and we are putting stuff out on Twitter, so if you're on there, please follow us, and we'll see you in a few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Is there any comments from our board members?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I would like to welcome Mrs. Christine Alonso to the board. This was a very tough for the board. This is the first time since I was appointed that we've had more than one qualified candidate for the appointment. We appreciate each candidate's interest in serving the school and the community and hope that they continue to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there any other comments from the board?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Just want to refer back to some of the public comments regarding, first, the election of the new board member. We did our very best to follow the solicitor's requirement and recommendations and the requirements of the law for transparency, a right to new and sunshine laws. So we did our best to conduct the interviews in public, which we did, and the nominations here tonight as, as recommended by our counselor. There was never any attempt, while it might not be the same form and format that it has been in the past, we were simply doing what was recommended by our solicitor. So that's that part of it. As far as the comment regarding the ongoing airport agreement, I may, I may be mistaken about parts of that agreement. I may be, I may have a lack of knowledge or understanding about certain charges or, and if I mentioned that we had to pay the solicitor, I, I could certainly be mistaken, and I never worry or never take offense with somebody questioning my knowledge or background or experience. But I do, I do take umbrage with somebody questioning my integrity. I'm never, never going to be dishonest deliberately. I'm never going to try and, any shenanigans or, or anything like that in matters of the school board. So that said, as a single board member, as I've said in the past, I will never act unilaterally outside the will of the board, and the will of the board has already been expressed in this matter that there is no further action for us to take. That said, I hope that, I hope you all have a good summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any other comments from any other board members? Myself again, Ms. Alonso Lorenzo, or Alonso Lorenzo, I'm sorry, I'll get it by the next meeting, I promise. Welcome to the board, and we appreciate, again, your time and service. And as, as we do appreciate all of yous up here. I mean, all of you spend your time up here tirelessly, thanklessly, and I, I will say I think each and every one of you bring a lot to this board, and we do appreciate it. Hearing no other.
Comment, comment, comment. Sorry. I am remiss in not, also not welcoming, welcoming you to the board. I'm sure you'll do a great job. Thank you for putting yourself out there and being willing to dedicate the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Hearing no other comments, the next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the boardroom of the administration building on Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM. Thank you all, and have a great summer.